All right, looking for a motion for the acceptance of the minutes.
So will.
Roll call?
Patrick.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Do we have a bunch of timeline? No.
Four point zero, sorry.
All right. Four point one, we have the treasures report. Four point. Approve the following financial reports from March four one through four twelve.
I'll say.
Any comments? Roll call?
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Are there any students or citizens wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move right into items for board action. No, sorry. I'm just reading too. Reports and recommendations superintendent, Dr. Hesse.
So the only item I have tonight, and I will turn it over to Dr. Cork, this year we did something a little different in our kindergarten registration, and we do have our kindergarten team along with our technology specialist and instructional coach to kind of go through the dynamics of what that was and the excitement around this program. So I will turn it over to them.
So last month, Dr. Matlak presented and gave a little bit of an idea of the collaborative effort that was going into kindergarten registration, but the best people to ultimately share how that went and celebrate the success of it is this team of educators. It was truly a collaborative effort this year as they started to work to make that first experience for our future Trojans and then parents, just more personal and bring more connection. So that's a great first impression. So I'm going to turn it over to these ladies for their presentation.
Okay, so we recently held our kindergarten registration at both buildings, March twenty second and twenty third. And we just wanted to kind of present the why, around why we chose to restructure registration this year. So from our fall data meetings at both elementary buildings, it was clearly communicated from the classroom teachers that we're seeing these gaps with just kindergarten readiness, whether it's skills or just the independence that's needed for some of the things in kindergarten. And we also had some conversation about just really wanting more community involvement and access to our families with some resources that could be helpful. So that brought together this team across both buildings. So I'm the instructional coach this year, so I'm working with our teachers constructionally and just meeting those needs. And then.
I'm Jennifer Inver. I am the technology support teacher for the district.
I'm Julie Keller, kindergarten teacher at Penburneville.
And I'm Jen Becker. I am one of the kindergarten teachers at Bethel, and I need to apologize to Mrs. Cox, who is the other kindergarten teacher. It's her daughter's senior night, who is a senior, so she is at her lacrosse team, or lacrosse game. She apologizes, but that's where she is.
I'm Becky Schlegel. I'm the other Penburneville kindergarten teacher.
So we put together our teachers with Jen and myself and Dr. Matlak and kind of just started to brainstorm what we wanted the ultimate goal of restructuring registration to be, especially coming off of the past couple of years where we had certain rules with things, couldn't do things. We just wanted it to really be a positive first experience. So we kind of came up with our why, which is to make our future children's first experience with school a positive one and to provide our families with as many resources as possible.
Okay, so when we looked at the census data, we only had about thirty kindergarten students expected, and so we decided that information was probably not accurate and we needed to get it out to the community that we were holding this new event. So we created this flyer, which we posted on the district Facebook page and both elementary schools' Facebook pages. It also was printed in the newsletter, and it was shared with the clergy groups so they could get it out to their members. And then we created a Google form, which was linked on a QR code, and parents would register through this Google form where we collected email addresses. And then we created this letter and mail merged in family-specific information and sent an email out to notify parents of what they needed to bring and what to expect on the day of the event.
Okay, so Dr. Matlak created this Trojan in Training manual that we passed out, and this is a really cool way to get the parents and give them the knowledge of what to expect for kindergarten and how to get their pre-kinders ready for kindergarten. So we looked at, and Dr. Matlak specifically looked at the standards for pre-kindergarten for literacy and math and writing, and then gave activities and ideas in this book for the parents to do with their children over the summer to get them ready for kindergarten in August. So once the parents and the students came to the events, which were held both in the afternoon and the evening, we wanted to be able to make sure all of the families were able to come. So we offered both kinds, and the evening types were by far the most popular. So we're glad that we included that as an option. So what we did, then the parents and the students came in, they kind of got introduced, a little welcome, and then the teachers, we pulled the kids and took them to the extra space that we had and had them do a few things down there with us. So while they were being pulled to do a little testing, did they kind of see what they knew so far? We would kind of see, do they know letter names, letter sounds? Do they know their numbers? Can they count? Just to kind of see where they are coming in. And then we did a few activities with them that were a little more fun for them to just kind of hang out and do while we were pulling number testing. So they had some free play time when they first came in. We could kind of see how they interacted with other students. And then we did a read aloud, kind of see how they do with attending to a story. And then they took turns cutting, coloring, and writing their name, as well as they had a snack with us as well. So they had about an hour to an hour and a half with us where they did all that fun stuff. And then as part of what the parents got to take home with them besides the manual, they got all the resources they needed to do those activities. Crayons, pencils, scissors, games. So over there, if you turn and look, they can choose some examples of things they got. So they all left with a bag, and then inside their bag, they were able to put a magnetic tray with their magnetic letters, a good scissors, Play-Doh, crayons. And then we were able to give them, all the students were able to get three hard books, One, Two, Three to the Zoo, Chica Chica Boom Boom, and Mama Mama Mrs. Mom.
And then they also got some hands-on math games.
Five?
And all the resources we gave parents aligned to what we put in the Trojan in Training book. So the activities that Dr. Matlak and the team created, all can be used with these things with the parents' book.
And so, you know, kind of in comparison to what has been done in the past, especially the recent past, we took open end restrictions. We just kind of wanted to, you know, go over what we did, what we used to do. I'm kind of like you guys, right?
And because I'm the old one of the group, I get to do what's in the past. But starting early on in my career, you know, we brought the kids in and we did the cutting, the coloring, and the teachers really got to see the students interact. But as time went on, we kind of got away from it being student-centered and more data-driven. So in the recent past, it was a very scary day for the kids. We had parents taking off like a half day, either in the morning or in the afternoon, and coming in, and we only had their students for maybe like fifteen, twenty minutes. And they went into a room with a teacher that they'd never met before, and we asked them to tell us the letters, the sounds, the numbers, and count to one hundred and twenty, and write their name. And then, and then we were like, bye! And we had like no interaction with the parents. We gave the parents no like feedback of how their child did, anything like that. So it was a very scary time for them, and it was definitely not student-friendly at all.
And I think the big thing was we didn't get to know the students and their parents. We didn't get to build a relationship with them. And we didn't really get like a good first rapport because it was so quick in and out. And so this experience this year was much different. We got to build kind of like the start of a relationship, a partnership.
Okay, so while the students were with the teachers, Mrs. Sanders and myself and a representative from a bunch of different groups were in either the library at Penburneville or the gym at Bethel. And we had Judy Strauss, who was in charge of student accounts, was there, and we had iPads so students could register right in the Sapphire. And then in the email we sent out, we asked them to bring all of the documentation that they needed so we could help them upload the forms rather than struggling at home and trying to find ways to do it. We just wanted to be able there to help them. A nurse was also there. The guidance counselor was there. We had someone from pupil services, so they were able to interact with our students who might be coming in with special needs so they could kind of help that transition more smoothly. Someone was there from transportation. Food services was there, and not only were they there, but they provided our students with cookies and water. Camden Vention, Mrs. Sanders was there representing Camden Vention, and she was able to give out some scholarships to some of our incoming kindergartners so that they'll be able to interact with their, the other students. I was there with technology, and I just shared the one-on-one advice that they would get and really emphasized getting the insurance. And we had PTO there as well, so we could have parents sign up and hopefully be more involved in our PTO. And the PTO also, both PTOs also sponsored two different gift baskets, so parents could fill out a rapid ticket and then they could win gift baskets.
So we're just going to share these are snippets of some of the parent feedback that we have gotten. But this year's kindergarten registration compared to others was much more personable and engaging. The sessions were divided into morning and afternoon, making them smaller. The kids were able to visit the classroom. Their student enjoyed giving, or going to the classroom and making new friends. Another component that was helpful was sitting in the gym and listening to Mr. Gears and the director of learning speak to all of us. I also enjoyed visiting each table to meet the staff members such as the nurse, pupil services, nutrition, registration, transportation, et cetera. It was nice getting to talk to each one of them. Lastly, they gave a great number of resources that my child was very excited about, like games, notebooks, scissors, et cetera, and they were not put to waste.
I cannot express how highly I thought of this kindergarten registration event at Penburneville Elementary. I was very impressed with the whole experience. As a parent and a student who attended kindergarten in fall twenty twenty and missed out on the entire experience, I was not sure what to expect. I was blown away during registration with every department being represented, with PDs and the patients of the staff who was explaining things throughout the evening. As a teacher myself, I couldn't love the On My Way to Kindergarten book any more than I do. I teach special education, and in my opinion, this was the perfect way to use a social story to help awakening our incoming kindergartners. I also am very proud to be a parent in the district who recognizes that kindergarten students come in at varying levels. The Trojan in Training booklet is amazing. It gives parents who are unfamiliar with what is expected when starting public education a bit of a comfort, knowing that their child would be accepted no matter their level. In closing, I'm proud to have both my daughters registered in the Total House and Area School District. I cannot be more impressed with the kindergarten registration event.
My daughter Alexis enrolled in kindergarten this year at Bethel Elementary. My son already attends kindergarten and is in Mrs. Becker's class. I felt the process this year went much smoother than when my son had enrolled. I liked the event that was held at the school with the different stations where parents could ask any questions, they had an appropriate staff member. I think moving forward that the format used this year works very well and should be continued. And the last one, I attended the kindergarten registration night with my daughter last month. The last time we had a child go through kindergarten was in two thousand nineteen. I can say that this year was much more memorable. My daughter had a great time and is excited to start kindergarten. In two thousand nineteen, I remember just bringing my kids and we sat in a quiet, sat quiet while we waited our turn to be tested. It was very quick and didn't give them anything to look forward to with kindergarten starting. The live presentation to the parents was very informative. It was nice that the kids were taken to a different room because we could actually listen to the presentation as a parent without being disrupted. I personally think that the way the kindergarten registration this year was a huge upgrade from previous years. I'm hoping it stays this way for when my next and last child starts kindergarten.
So in conclusion, we, and I appreciate Dr. Matlak asking us to speak too, because this was a total team effort, like each of us played a different role, but it was basically a four-month collaboration of planning on what our outcome wanted to be, how we would prepare it, who would handle what, and like actually executing it then on the twenty-second and twenty-third. We feel like it was very well received by families, especially from those quotes we just shared with you. We loved working across the buildings to make this happen. We also were super thankful for our parent teacher organizations at both buildings. We really wanted their involvement and to bring in new faces to our PTO at both places, like they're coming into kindergarten. And thank you, Jen Becker's here. She helped us with Bethel's. They were wonderful with their big baskets they donated. So hopefully we have some new faces to join those organizations. And we think we left a good first impression for our kindergarten families, and I'm just excited for the fall.
I think I was supposed to say this earlier, so I apologize. One of the teams, one of the things we learned as a team was the after-school session was wonderful. In the past, we always had students that never came to registration because parents weren't able to get off of the day and stuff. So having the different time slots was wonderful, but we also learned that we should probably have more of these spots to be able to get all of those.
And these are some of your future folks. That's all we have.
How many registered in the building? What was the participation?
We had everybody, everybody that's registered in Bethel team except for two, and one of them was on vacation, so that I know.
I think PD had everyone but five. He was, he had five.
So what were the numbers?
They were pretty split. I would say we were over, it was over fifty total.
I think Bethel has like thirty-two.
I would say nice job. I especially like this book here. I don't remember that when my son started kindergarten. I think it helps them identify who their go-to leaders are going to be in the school.
That was one of our points that came up in our discussion too, like even from Mr. Gears and Mrs. Timmy, to the secretaries, like parents need to put faces to those people that support our district. So we wanted to be able to provide that to them. And then we have extra copies too, so if kids register between now and the fall, they'll get a copy of those things if the course starts.
I think it's fantastic.
Yeah.
Well, I know in the past, we've gone up, like right before school starts, a week of kindergarten program, but we're doing that again this year.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the time you guys put in for this. It looks like it's very positive to report here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Asher. An answer to a question, right around seventy-five kids for the incoming kindergarten.
Okay, it's actually, they don't really have a lot of time.
It's actually, I'm not sure, about sixty.
Oh, those are for you guys, if you need them. I mean, I'm, I read it. Great, then you have more kids coming up. Thank you, thank you.
So that does admire. Any notices? Items for board action.
Nine point zero point one, I make a motion to approve the following job descriptions as listed below.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Roll call?
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick? Feiler?
Yes. Moving on to finance, Mr. Heck.
Do we have twenty-four, a bunch of timeline? Just to tell you where we're at with the budget, we're right in the middle there. We need a finance committee meeting. We're trying to set that up for either probably first week in May, but preliminary budget will be presented at the work session in May. Preliminary budget will be set for approval at the basic sixteen meeting, and then June sixth, we'll update on the changes, and the final budget will be approved on the twentieth. And it has to be done by the thirtieth per meeting. The mindset that we're going into it with is a zero, no change milled rate. That's what we're, you know, that's the, that's the mindset we're using. And we, you know, this is, it's the same thing as last year. We don't have the numbers for the, for the project yet, but we're, we're, we've got the project covered, is what it comes down to. We're just going to try to keep the, keep the goals the same and go forward from there. But the finance committee will be either the first, probably first week in May, have everything going.
So you're confident we can do the project without a tax increase?
I mean, at, at the numbers that we, we just showed, that's what we're, you know, how it goes. Any more than that, we're, you know, I can't say that. I'm just saying it goes on us forever.
Moving on to buildings, Mr. Heck.
All right. Nine point two point one, approve the awarding of the junior senior high school asbestos project contract to PSC E H S T Acquisition LLC at a base rate of forty-seven zero seventy-eight with the work to begin in the summer of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Any comments? What does base bid mean?
So that is, so within the, within the bidding contract, that is what it would be, the all-in, that's the cost now, as they go through the project. And if there's, you know, they don't anticipate that they've missed anything, but in the event that as they're uncovering things, if there's a pipe that they discover, then there's certain alternates, if you will, or per-unit cost that then gets tacked on. So the base bid is this, so this is assuming that there's nothing that ain't counter, that's the cost. But then they do have to break it down by the burden of, you know, pipe, pipe fitting, and go through.
And when would this officially begin? When is, are we starting June fifth after school's out, or what does that?
Yes, as soon as school's out, they will move in the following week. And the hope is to have it wrapped up by the middle, beginning to middle of August.
We will not have that back then?
We will not.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Everybody. Nine point two point one, approve the authorization of the administration in coordination with Crabtree, Roll Call, and Associates to advertise the bidding of the junior senior high school renovation project when documents are ready.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, little sorry, nine point two point two. Any comments?
The only purpose I'll mention for why, we will officially go out to bid the first week in June, but we are actually going to start the advertising in May so that we're kind of have a head start on it. So as soon as they're ready to go, they're going to start advertising it and then have everything drawn up. So we kind of, this is the meeting that would authorize the initial May advertisement, and then June is just a simple, it's go time.
Any other comments? Roll call?
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
All right. Nine point two point three, approve the lock-in price of two point five seven three eight per gallon of heating oil for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with world fuel, world fuel services, eighty-four thousand gallons.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Is World Fuel Services a subsidiary? No, it's formerly Papco.
Papco, okay.
Papco's are currently, they currently use it. They just changed the, it's bought out.
Seems like a pretty good read to me. Roll call?
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes. All right, kind of slide down to nine point four policy.
All right. All right, nine point four point one, we're going to give second reading and final approval to the following policies as listed.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call?
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes. To nine point five curriculum, Mrs. Clark?
Nine point five point one, I made the motion to approve the dual enrollment agreement with Redding Harry Community College for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four academic year.
Excellent.
Any comments? Roll call?
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Nine point five point two, I made the motion to approve an agreement with mental health first aid to provide professional development for sixteen staff members during the summer of the two thousand twenty-three school year at the cost of twenty-six thousand.
Excellent.
Any comments?
So does this mean they get a certification or something?
So to clarify, this is professional development that's geared towards training sixteen of our staff to become certified trainers and mental health first aid. So then our sixteen, our team of sixteen can deliver all professional development and support the mental health needs at each building. So we no longer have to send people to trainings, we can do the training process.
And how, how long is that certification?
The certification is put indefinitely. They just need check-ins every now and then if something were to change. This is coming out of S-Cert two, since we had to have mental health funds set aside. So we thought this would be a good way of, you know, putting some longevity and sustainability in our practices.
How are the staff being selected?
We've been working as an, as an administrative team. School counselors will definitely be on there, but we have sixteen, so we're trying to get teacher leaders and people in the classroom as well who could step up and then run the trainings at different staff meetings and professional development sessions.
Are the teachers who express particular interests, even though they may not fit in one of those categories you're talking about?
So with, with this particular round, since it's, it's new to us, we've been a little bit more selective in people we think could be a great fit, not only those who already had a buy-in to, you know, looking at both the social, emotional, and academic side of the learner, but also teacher leaders that we think others will be receptive to receive training from.
Roll call?
Patrick?
Yeah.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Moving on to nine point eight personnel, Mr. Palmer. Nine point eight point one, I'm going to approve the bond resignations. Here is Feiler, does a part-time special education, autistic support, paraprofessional at Bethel Elementary, effective three thirty-one twenty-three. And Clifford Yeakley is full-time grounds maintenance, effective four seventeen twenty-three.
Excellent.
Any comments? All those in favor, is that the same nine? Motion carries. Nine point eight point two.
Nine point eight point two, I move that we approve the following employment, Kimberly Frogmore as a part-time cafeteria worker at the junior senior high school, on a hourly rate of twelve fifty, effective four nineteen twenty-three, pending completion of paperwork.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Byler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Nine point eight point three, I move that we approve a medical, a medical from Linda Davis from three nineteen twenty-three through ten twenty-five twenty-three.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Byler?
Yes.
Nine point eight point four, I move that we approve job, job title change for Dawn Weiss from administrative assistant for accounts payable and purchasing, food service, financial director to controller, to better fit her current job responsibility.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Byler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Nine point eight point five, I move that we approve the following substitute classified staff, event staff for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, Devin Box, events staff.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bats?
Yes.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Byler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Nine point eight point six, I move that, uh, following volunteers be approved for the remainder of the twenty twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year as listed.
Next second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Clough?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Byler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bats?
Yes. All right, um, does anybody have any new business to discuss? Old business to discuss? Any administrators wish to present? Is there no one? Um, calendar events are listed there, grad projects, prom coming to the end of the year, kinda scary how fast the year went, but we're here. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board this evening?
Yes.
Who's standing?
Daniel Steinhauer. So, I had the opportunity to see your last meeting, and, uh, there's a few things that, uh, I have a little concern with, and maybe it needs a little reminder. So, I heard the part where you have agreed to, uh, a seventy million dollar loan, but that would be extra, it was like you would be looking to take a sixty-two million dollar loan out, am I right in that?
So the bond allows us to take up to seventy?
Up to seventy.
Yeah, the parameters.
So, I heard you mention that you would keep money in the capital reserve, because you could get a little more interest on that than what the bond is. So, we'll go back two years, if you remember. We, we did not decrease the tax millage, because we wanted to put money in the capital reserve, so we could pay that money and not have to loan as much money. And here we are today, you're wanting to keep that money in there, which is our money, it's ours first, you take it from us, and then you wanna leave it sit there and gain interest, and then loan more over here, that's wrong. Let us keep our money and invest it the way we want, I don't need you to invest it for me. So, if you do use that money in there, then you have a open-end loan to go ahead and borrow against, if you so choose. So, I would suggest to the board members that when all that's final, that, that remaining that you agreed you could loan up to gets taken away, because we do know there's plenty of places y'all can find to spend the money, right? So, I am concerned that you're not gonna use the money in your capital reserve like you initially talked, like we argued for many hours about, and you're gonna go ahead and loan more money and let that sit there, and then it's just gonna get spent. So I just want to remind you of what was talked and what is right for the taxpayer. Don't take my money so you can leave it sit and invest it. If you need it for a building, fine, use it for the building. Don't leave it sit there, it can sit in my pocket, and I think a lot of taxpayers would feel the same way, so, thank you.
Just to clarify, Danny, I don't think the bond, and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the bond is not just an open-ended line of credit, it has to be specifically for this building project and this other project only. Just, just so we're clear.
And I also know that we can find many, many things associated with the building project to spend it on. Been there, done that, right? I know how it goes.
That's certainly true, but I think my goal, and, and some of my peers' goals for sure, is to keep the cost as low as possible, and that's why, um, being new here, that's why we rejected the first bid that we did, and that's why I ask the questions that I do about paying for this.
Sure, I'm not, I'm not pointing, I'm not blaming any one person, I'm, I, I have a concern that my money and the taxpayers' money is not sitting there just waiting to be spent while we loaned more money over here, and we're paying here interest, and we still have this pot here that you're gonna spend, and you will spend it, there, there's no doubt about that, you will spend it, no matter whether it's in salaries or benefits, or, or roof project, or, or some emergencies, or some new program or furniture, it will get spent, right? Are we agreed on that? It will get spent, right? So, use the money in capital reserve to pay a portion of that building and not loan it all, 'cause history, and we talked about this before, history shows us that the board, in all their projects, always financed a hundred percent, and that was the goal, not to do that on this project. So, let's see if we can't do that.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Nadine Dunn, I have grandchildren, and I have children that have attended Topahopin, and I have had the pleasure of working for Topahopin. During the time that I worked there, I have met many children, some that are very academically inclined and some that are not, I would like to see some of the children that aren't so academically inclined be able to get awards when they achieve something, it would be nice to see that. Another thing, um, I'd like to discuss is, I at one time was reprimanded because I talked to a father about his daughter, which I accepted the rep of being reprimanded, and I was asked to leave to go to a different, uh, building, and I decided not to. Now I am made aware of other children's privacy being violated, this violates FERPA. A staff member used their position to gain confidential information knowing they had no right to. This needs to stop. Our children's education and their privacy needs to be kept private. We made mistakes in life as children, and we grew up to be good people, most of us. I'm sure some of you did something you were ashamed of, and I think it should be kept private. Another concern is porn on the laptops, um, Matt, I know you do a wonderful job, um, what I don't understand is they're whitelisted when they're playing games, how are they getting into porn?
We can discuss later, but I, I'm not aware of any porn that people are getting to.
Oh, you're not? Okay, all right, well, thank you. Um, I do hope that the board, I urge you to discuss these matters, because they are happening, I know of a student that was sent to an alternative school for having porn on his laptop, so I'd really like you to take all this into consideration.
Anyone else?
In June of two thousand twenty-two, my husband and I filed suit against the district for violating our child's privacy, along with ADA, FERPA, HIPAA, just to name a few. In August two thousand twenty-two, this board put this information on the agenda, and according to Brian Volin, in full transparency, even though the action had taken place a month before, in my opinion, that was more of deception versus transparency. Two months ago, I addressed this forward as to your obligations to our students to protect the education and privacy of our kids, this applied to the staff and the administrators as well, even after all of this, two employees found it necessary to violate a student's privacy again. I have had this conversation way too many times, since nineteen ninety-eight, I have needed to address this issue, I've done it privately, though, I've had this conversation with staff, administrators, as well as board members, when will it stop? You are in litigation, yet you still make the choice to violate our students. The only way this is going to end is if the board acts swiftly, both of these employees paid with our tax dollars need to be terminated immediately, some of you are up for reelection, this information will be made public along with how you respond, will you be complacent and sweep it under the rug again? When are, when are the children going to matter more? When are the children going to be the priority? When are you going to do the right thing and just say, no more? My grandbabies asked me to read in their classrooms, I said, Mr. Gears won't allow it, of course, they asked why, and I said, that's because the school shared, and I mentioned the family member's name, records when Robbie Lane asked for them and then published it, and Omar is being published, is being punished because the district broke the law, their drop, their jaws dropped, so if a six and an eight-year-old know that this is wrong, we can do better, the kids deserve better, and I implore the board to do right by this student that has been violated, and I will deal with you in the court of law. Let me be clear, you can't make restitution for any student that has been violated, especially the extensive means this district continues to make by continuing to violate the privacy of our students.
Any other comments? You know, Mrs. Assler, you bring this to us, but we're still blindsided, and...
What do you mean, you're blindsided?
You know, what you're speaking of this time, this other student or whatever, blindsided, I literally know nothing, none of us, I, does anyone here know anything?
No.
And I'm sorry to engage directly.
No, that's fine.
But I, I don't know.
So, so does the staff?
To stand here and blast us kinda?
Does this sta, hold on, does the staff?
We're gonna ask.
Administration, hold on, not give you the information? That's what I'm hearing.
We don't get information of students.
Why not?
When, 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 when a parent?
We need to, we need to stop back, step back and think about our roles.
Hold on a second.
We're a governing body.
Right.
We hire these folks to run.
Exactly.
So, the proper, and, and I don't know what you're even speaking of this time.
I understand.
Um, but coming to us here, like...
So...
Send us an email saying, hey, this happened, so we can ask the questions, instead of putting us on blast.
So, so, it's my understanding, I was contacted, I don't know, I could look it up on my calendar, by a, a grandparent and a parent, about their student, and, uh, I said, I bet the board doesn't even know, you need to contact the district, you need to contact them.
And you're gonna blast it.
And you need to contact them.
I mean, and it's okay, I'm not condemning you for pressing, I...
I hear ya.
But I can't fix anything, I can't even inquire about it.
Right, right.
If, if we're not made aware of it.
Right.
From anybody, anybody's gonna hear.
And, and that's what I said, I said, the district needs to know, you need to contact the district.
Mrs. Dunn, you bring these problems to us, where were the problems when you were employed here?
Yep.
You came here the day of the...
I wasn't allowed to discuss things. We are supposed to be private.
There's a chain of command, and the chain of command goes to your, to your teacher, your lead teacher, from there, if you're not satisfied, you go to the building.
Talking teachers.
Li, listen, just listen to, to what I have to say, the chain of command goes to your teacher, you were a paraprofessional, am I correct?
No, not anymore.
You were?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you were a paraprofessional, you had an issue, so who's your direct contact from there?
But this has nothing to do...
Listen!
No, I'm not going to listen, because it has nothing to do with teachers.
We're looking for a motion to adjourn, we will have an executive session for real estate and personnel.
Okay, now we go to the lawyers. Now we go to the lawyers.
Do we have, are we good? Okay, word.
I thought the board was supposed to hear things, and you just decide upon yourself, if you take for all, that we can't discuss things, we are taxpayers and have the right...
You're exactly right, Danny.
That's right, I know I am.
But, but it was a problem, you didn't do the right thing, there was a problem, go through the chain of command and come to us, or come to us.
And I agree.
After, after you made a statement.
I didn't make any statement, I didn't make any statement.
I, I know, yep.
I think we need some new coordinators.
It's a free job.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I thought, yes, yes.